Calls may be ordered, starting with Mr. Clerk. Do we have a determination of coin?
Mr. Chairman, we have six present and one absent, so we do have a four.
Next, we'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you all for being here this evening. One quick announcement before we get started. For the first time this evening, this meeting is being broadcast with closed captioning. You can see it on the television. I pointed towards us, so you can see in real time, which is a wonderful service to our deaf and hard-of-hearing community here in Faribault. I've been told that to make sure that this works well, we all need to speak clearly and enunciate and talk towards the microphone, so I'll ask you to keep that in mind as we move through this evening. So, thank you all very much. So far, it seems to be doing well, as I look at it on the screen up there, so that's wonderful. So, first on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I'll entertain any motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is recognitions and awards. I don't see any on the agenda. Is that correct? None of those this evening, so that brings us to community comment. This is the time for any members of the community to step forward and bring any thoughts or ideas to the board that they may have on their mind. Looking at the audience, and there aren't any members at this moment, but just in case, I recognize some faces out there, just in case they decide they come forward, we'll give them a minute. All right, we'll move on, and thank you all. Next is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is approved with one motion. Any board member can request to remove an item from the consent agenda, but things in the consent agenda are not debatable items. So, are there any items that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Can I just make one spelling correction? Just, is that all right?
I guess we won't consider that a debate. A debate.
Under the recommendation to hire, we have consideration to approval of hiring Eric Hildebrand. It has A-B-I-S tutor. It's really the A-V-I-D, avid tutor. We don't have anybody from A-B-I-S working for us.
Really? Hopefully, without objection, we'll put that in there.
I appreciate that.
Right. Any other items? All right, so, without that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This action requires a roll call. Mr. Clerk, please.
I vote yes. Tom Casper?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Yvette Mithaller?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
Aye.
Chairman Ingraham?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, it passes six zero.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Next on our agenda is item number six, the curriculum. Curriculum Committee report. Colleen is not here this evening. Tom, you were at that meeting. Would you like to say anything about our meeting? With the thirty seconds worth of morning I just spent.
I think it was more like five seconds.
Yeah.
No, well, for one thing, I think the process of the curriculum committee meeting, prior to work sessions other than the day of the regular board meeting, would be a good one. We had a number of staff attending at the meeting, so that part was good. I'm trying to recall anything specific that stands out, and without preparation, I'm not prepared to say anything about that.
There was some discussion about grad requirements at the meeting.
Ah, yes. Yes, okay, thank you for the reminder.
State law has a...
There is apparently an opportunity for the district to make a decision about grad standard testing. There are several options of which I'm not prepared to comment completely about, but the district has some flexibility in terms of determining what kind of test or how, whether there will be a cut score for that test. The primary discussion centered around the acuplacer test as one possibility for, to meet those students, well, I'd say their needs, because I'm a firm believer that the acuplacer has a real value in identifying areas of weakness and so on. And as I understand, this is, Mr. Sescor, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this probably will apply to a fairly small number of students who, by the time of their senior year, had not passed the other required testing for graduation.
That's correct.
Okay, so with that refresher in my mind, I think it was a good meeting. I think there was some good discussion. I don't believe that there's a recommendation at this point. The discussion will continue, but due to the changes in law, the district has, I think, the obligation. We, I guess we could choose to stay with the current system. Am I correct about that? That is one option?
Yeah, we have a choice of staying with the current system or choosing one of those other systems that we have. You're right, we can either adopt a cut score or we can adopt a curriculum-oriented test.
So, I think that discussion will be continuing and probably recommendation brought to the board fairly soon, so that the schools can be prepared to administer whatever testing is necessary to those students in a timely way.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, next on the agenda, policy. Item seven, policy. There was no meeting this week.
We do have, I do have an issue with the board regarding the policy.
Please, you want to?
Yes.
Please do.
We read the wellness policy at the Wellness Committee.
Okay.
And we can look at the policy under, let's see, it would be three, C. We did a first read at this last board meeting, but then we brought it to the Wellness Committee, and it's noted that under C3, we are not following this policy in the schools. And so, they thought we should bring it to the board to discuss whether we could change the wording. One example, the schools are strongly encouraged to not use food and beverages as rewards, or what the board's opinion was regarding this part of this policy.
Which?
Okay, so we are on...
What page are you on? I see it on page twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight of the...
Page three of the policy, the actual policy page.
So, an example I can think of is my daughters have received coupons to Godfather's Pizza for reading so many books or something like that. This is the sort of thing that has been there. Is that the sort of thing that the committee was talking about?
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the very popular rewards that the schools use. Teachers used candy at times. They thought maybe this had been brought to the board in the past and was put in place, so rather than the, you know, the policy committee was changing it, they thought it should be brought to the general board before we do a second reading. So, I didn't know, I, my, I felt our strong, I thought changing the wording would be a good thing, because we are, if we're not following this policy as it's written, it's not a good thing.
Well, yeah, I agree with that.
And a lot of people, obviously, were concerned about the health of our students and their nutrition, but we also have very popular rewards in place that do incorporate.
Was there a particular recommendation from the Wellness Committee, whether or not they would prefer to see it changed, or?
I got the impression that we change it. Two are strongly encouraged, that schools are strongly encouraged, that they felt we should change it to really reflect the current behavior, because what I felt was the Wellness Committee.
And at the same time, move towards the true policy.
But at this time, we should change it and continue to work as a school district's force with this policy.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if we should read this for the benefit of our listening public?
Yeah.
So they know what we're talking about.
Yeah, thank you, Howard. That's a great idea. So, the item under consideration is a policy 533, which regards wellness, and it contains a number of items that relate to the health and wellness of our students within the district. The item being referred to at this moment is item C3, and it reads as follows. Schools will not use foods or beverages as rewards for academic performance or good behavior unless this act practice is allowed by a student's individual education plan or behavior intervention plan, and will not withhold food or beverages as punishment. And the suggestion from the Wellness Committee is that this should reflect what current practice is, which is, and therefore should be, which is that this does go on in some realms. Perhaps so do, change the phrasing to some strongly suggest versus an absolute phrase is the way it is.
If anybody has any comments they want to share, then we can bring it to the next policy committee before we bring it back to the second reading.
I'd like to know if there's evidence that this has really been grossly abused, before I'd be against it, or be in favor of this policy.
It used to be abused.
So, do we have examples and so forth? Before we meet again, maybe we can see how serious a problem this is, or maybe it's not a problem.
I don't think it's a problem much anymore, but we do have some of the reading programs that still give you Godfather's Pizza coupons for if you, you know, get through ten books in X amount of days, you get a coupon for a free pizza at Godfather's. There's some other things that go on in elementary school that they'll get, you know, if they do well on their reading test, they get to go to a drawer and pick out a piece of candy.
Is that a bad thing?
Not per se, but we are looking out for the best interest of our students, and with obesity as high as it is in school-aged children, that's why this policy was changed, was to address, to help address that. So...
You know, and in that time, we've made big changes in the school menu, so I see that we made changes there, so we're making changes, I guess, is what I'm saying, and I think that is going well, and that's a lot for the community to adapt to that, that I would support allowing rewards, allowing teachers to do that, encourage them if they have to.
And we have leaps and bounds. I mean, we've gotten rid of almost all soda. Elementary schools don't have soda anymore at all. The middle school does not have soda, I believe, anymore. The high school has some, but it's only turned on during certain hours of the day. But I agree, I think this is more, I mean, the amount that used to be done compared to what's being done now is minimal. And that good rapport with Godfather's Pizza that we have, that they're willing to work with us.
Well, can I suggest a path for, towards? This is, this item is in front of us for a second reading, so we were being asked to act on it this evening. And this is exactly why we have first and second readings, to give the Wellness Committee time to take a look at it. That's a good thing. And so, there's a suggested change here. So, my recommendation would be for, I'll entertain a motion to approve with a suggested change to, well, entertain any motion to approve, but I might encourage someone to make a motion to approve with a new wording to C3. So, we start with a motion that automatically has it in there. Maybe we can discuss that, and whether or not somebody wants to offer an amendment to change it back, and then see if we're ready to take a vote this evening.
Or we could refer it back to the Policy Committee to bring it back for another reading?
Yes, I don't think so. I don't think there's any reason we couldn't refer this back to Wellness Committee. I only speak for myself on that, in that I feel ready to see me to act, to say that I'm okay. Strongly encouraging the limited use versus forbidden. I think we have made many changes towards wellness, you know, with the diets in schools, and I agree that some small changes, or some small allowance for this seems very reasonable. But that's now just expressing my opinions, so.
Well, I would make a motion, I will make a motion to amend the policy, C3, to read students. Our schools are strongly encouraged to not use foods or beverages as rewards for academic performance or good behavior.
So, could you repeat that wording for me?
Schools are strongly encouraged not to use foods or beverages as rewards for academic performance or good behavior unless this practice is allowed by a student's individual education plan or behavior intervention plan, and will not withhold food or beverage, beverages as punishment.
And Kathy, do you have that?
Schools are strongly encouraged not to use foods or beverages as rewards for academic performance or good behavior unless this practice is allowed by a student's individual education plan or behavior intervention plan, and will not withhold food or beverages as punishment.
So, if I understand the motion, there was a motion to amend the policy, which I think we would have to approve or not approve, and then we could then entertain a motion to approve the policy. So, this changes the word in the policy as written, then we'd do a separate motion to approve or not approve the policy as a whole. I think that's the line of actions that we have in front of us. So, at this moment, we're just looking for an amendment to this policy.
I just don't like the wording on that.
Do a suggestion for an amendment?
It's, I don't think it's much different than what you have, will not, but strongly encouraged. It's almost there. I mean, is there something where, I mean, you know they're going to be using it, and I don't, you know, like you said, read twenty books, you get a Subway or Godfather's, you know, as a reward. Is there other words? I don't know. Can you refer this to the Wellness and Superintendent? Proper wording? Maybe not as strong, or?
I think that's a reference from the Wellness Committee. One of the members, not myself, that suggested that at the time, but I'm just adding, I mean, I'm not...
The Policy Committee hasn't, the Wellness Committee's the only one that's looked at that, so the policy hasn't looked at it for the second reading yet. The policy hasn't seen the change. It just came from Wellness.
Then we should refer this back to Policy.
You can if you want, unless you think that it's such a simple change that you don't need to send it to Policy.
But my motion has no second.
Yeah, is there a second? Unless asked for a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you for pointing that. It's a second for the motion. So, we have a motion in front of us.
Discussion.
There's just not, we've started some discussion. We're welcome some more discussion. I think this is actually a small change. I think I still want us to strongly encourage the reduction of the use of food as rewards. I think that's a good thing. And I'm okay with the language, strongly encouraged. Wellness has talked about it, so I'm happy to take that with an invitation. I think the policy will have me concerns about it, so I don't feel the need to send this back to Policy. My personal opinion is that we can act on it this evening. I'm comfortable in my head, but those are my feelings.
Well, a question comes to my mind, and that is, how effective was it in motivating students? And if we're going to take it away, what do we have to replace it with?
Well, I don't think anybody's suggesting we have to take it away, and that's actually we're changing the policy such that it can stay in place where staff feel it's really important.
I mean, from my contact with parents, I think they appreciate what we do with, for example, the pizza. And I think that's appreciated, that food rewards for that in that example.
The parents appreciate it.
Yeah, with, you know, with the pizza for their family. I think it's a lot.
Does this go up to, like, the middle school level two? Could they do something like this?
I would have to look at it to see if they have a reward program. Depends on how you look at it. You could almost, I want to make sure that we separate academic and fundraiser. I think they're two different things. There are fundraisers that are with the, with the local businesses and food industries that allow fundraising, and as a reward for a child that does the most fundraising, they get something. That is a little bit different than academic rewards for that. I'd have to go look and see how much of it is being done. I think that the idea of policy, just so you know, is that policy covers the school so that the school doesn't get in trouble. So, if you make a policy so strict and we violate the policy, then we end up getting in trouble. So, the idea is that we make sure that we cover all of our bases with policy, so that if we are doing something that's the norm, that we cover our bases for it. And this sounds like it's been the norm for, I don't know how long, yep. So, I don't know why you would contradict what the norm is and put yourself at risk of violating your own policy. That's the logic behind it. And then, I think at the same time, educationally, we would work towards instilling intrinsic values for academic performance rather than extrinsic values for academic performance. There it is in a nutshell.
Well, it would be nice to have some feedback from teachers on this. I'll support, I'll support the change. Because it's not cast in concrete, I'm a little concerned that a teacher could get reprimanded and have something put on his record or whatever for giving a treat to kids for learning, and I certainly wouldn't be in favor of that, but it sounds like you've got some leeway there. And I have no idea how effective it is, so, but it sounds good to me. My kid had a chance, and it sounds like parents do like it, to read ten books and get a coupon for something, even if it's food. Kind of nice.
Well, and I guess I would speak towards it. I like the phrasing of it, because I agree completely, Howard. Nobody wants, you know, I would hate to think of a teacher getting reprimanded for giving up candy as a reward, I think, or, you know, any sort of written reprimand. On the other hand, I do think if a teacher was using it to, as rewards to access, having something in policy that gives our administrators, the ability to say, maybe we should think about another way of motivating our kids aside from just food, I think that's also important. So, I think that the new wording finds a nice balance there. And so, I'm fairly comfortable with the new wording. I don't think it'll lead to any teachers being written up over handing out candy. I think that's key. It's not going to happen. But that, we sort of recognize that, in fact, we'd like to find ways to motivate students without handing out food at every opportunity.
Can I amend an amendment?
Absolutely.
Take out the word strongly?
Okay, so why don't you phrase that as a motion, and then we'll say for a second, and then...
Okay, just as we can do that. Put the same words, but take out strongly.
Okay. In fact, I'll second that motion to take out the word strongly from that. So, it would then read, Kathy, if you'd like to read it back to us.
Schools are encouraged not to use foods or beverages as rewards for academic performance or good behavior unless this practice is allowed by a student's individual education plan or behavior intervention plan, and will not withhold food or beverages as punishment.
So, we have a motion and a second to amend the amendment. So, we're a few deep in the motions, but I think we can navigate our way out, to remove the word strongly from the amendment to the policy. Any discussion on that? Not hearing any, why don't we go ahead and do a vote on that? So, the motion is to move the word strongly from the amendment to the policy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So, okay, so now we have a new, to back us up where we are. Kathy, if you would read for us, the amended amendment to the, to the policy. Let's see where you're at.
Schools are encouraged not to use foods or beverages as rewards for academic performance or good behavior unless this practice is allowed by a student's individual education plan or behavior intervention plan, and will not withhold food or beverages as punishment.
That's now the current amendment to this policy. Any further discussion on this, this amendment to the policy? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment to the policy signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So, we have an amendment to the policy, and now we can act on the policy itself.
Except I'd like to move another amendment. Strike out the word schools and insert the word teachers. Schools aren't given the, I think, the rewards on teachers, are they?
Before we discuss it, why don't we see if there's a second to that? So, what's the motion at this moment? Is it to replace schools with staff or teachers?
Staff, huh?
Staff.
Staff, okay.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second to approve the, change, striking of the word schools and replacing it with the word staff in this, in this policy. I'm fine with that. I think that's a reasonable change. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, at this moment, the Chair would welcome any motion to approve policy 333, 533, the Wellness Policy.
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Now, is there any discussion on the, on the policy?
Are we approving all three, 532?
At this moment, we're just going to look at 533, and then we'll look at the other two, yep. Any further discussion on this policy? Hearing none, all those in favor of policy 533 Wellness as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all very much for that. We have two other policies in front of us this evening. Those are Policies 532, Use of Peace Officers and Crisis Teams to Remove Students with IEPs from School Grounds, and Policy 806, Crisis Management Policy. I'll entertain a motion to approve both policies, and then open it up for discussion, if we have any discussion. So, none of those. We have a motion to approve both policies. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion on these two? Hearing none. We have a motion in front of us to approve Policy 532, Use of Peace Officers and Crisis Teams to Remove Students with IEPs from School Grounds, and Policy 806, Crisis Management Policy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. As usual, because we have approved a number of new policies, we need to rescind the old policies that were there, adopted at earlier dates. I'll read through those, and then entertain a motion to approve the rescission of all of them. The policies to be rescinded are Policy 532, The policies to be rescinded are Policy 532, Use of Peace Officers and Crisis Teams to Remove Students with IEPs from School Grounds, adopted October 17th, 2011. Policy 533 Wellness, adopted December 19th, 2011. And Policy 806, Crisis Management Policy, adopted March 15th, 2010. I'll entertain a motion to approve rescission of those old policies.
So who?
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve rescission of the policies as listed. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Next on the agenda is Item 8, Finance. Is there a Finance Committee report?
I was at the last Finance meeting. We met a week ago today at 7:30 in the morning at the district office. We were represented by members of the community, as well as staff, and several school board members, and we had a great discussion on a number of items, all of which looked like they're going to be on the agenda coming up, so that's my report.
All right, thank you, Howard. So as Howard said, we have a number of items recommended for approval by the Finance Committee. So we'll go through these one by one. Item number one, Non-Public Guidance Counseling. Superintendent Seska, would you like to tell us a little bit about that?
Sure, this is a counseling contract that has to be approved through our school district for the, this is, is this for Fairbo BA? Yeah, for Fairbo BA School District. We don't, the cost isn't, it doesn't cost us anything for this contract, they just have to approve the contract through a public school system, in this case it's us. So there's no cost to us, we just have to make the right approval process.
So if I understand this right, for BA to be able to hire somebody for their guidance counseling services?
Yes.
They need us to approve that?
That's correct.
All right? Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the non-public guidance counseling contract?
So who?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is the Northfield Autism Consultant. Again, Tom, would you like to...
Yeah, you know, I'm going to bring, these are a little more complicated, so I'm going to ask our in-house expert to talk a little bit about those.
Good evening. All of the special education contracts that are before you are contracts that we have been using for a number of years for staff that we either need to purchase those services from other districts, or other districts need to purchase from us in order to meet the needs of our students with special, in special education. So autism consultants, we've been contracting with Northfield for the autism consultant. We share those services between Northfield, the state academies, and Fairbo Public Schools. That, the services from Deb Peters have been utilized by the district for about eight years now.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if we can consider 7B 2 through 8, all in one motion? Approve all of these?
Maybe through...
Are they all contracts where we don't have enough students of our own?
Through seven.
Exactly.
Through seven?
Yes, because we don't have enough students of our own, or the population, or the type of license required in order to serve the students that we're required to have, and we don't have the population of students, yes, then that, that's correct.
Does that seem like a reasonable motion to Cheryl?
Yes, it does.
Hearing that, then I will entertain a motion to approve, and we can discuss all of them individually as we need to, but I will entertain a motion to approve Items 7, I'm sorry, 8B 2 through 7. I'll read them off. These are the Northfield Autism Consultant, the Owatonna Vision Consultant, Owatonna Physical, and Other Health Impairments, School Psychologist, Pat Garrity, MSAD Interpreter Services, and the Northfield Berthyr 2 Facilitator. These are the items, I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
So who?
And a second to approve those. So further discussion on those? Would you like to, Cheryl, start off with any discussion about any of those other items?
The, I'll just explain quickly that the Vision Consultant and the Physical and Other Health Impaired Teacher, we contract with those through Owatonna Schools, they provide the individuals for us for those services. The School Psychologist, we are in need of a .5, a half-time FTE of School Psychology Services yet this year. Pat helped us out last year in the same spot, and we are still seeking a permanent replacement for that position. And the Interpretive Services, MSAD, we have had this contract for many years with them. It allows us, for those after-school activities, sports, and those kinds of activities, to share the cost of an interpreter when needed. We provide, our interpreters in the district do provide those services. They do have the first right of refusal on those jobs, and then MSAD also has folks that are available if needed, or for some of their students if there's a duplication of need for students. So it allows us to share that cost, and they provide that contract. But it does not replace our interpreters. I think that's an important thing to state publicly. And the last one, our Berthyr 3 Facilitator, it's our intake coordinator that we share with Northfield through Rice County for our Berthyr 3 students and families.
And if I can comment too, I think you're looking at a lot of good collaboration with the surrounding districts. That's always a very good thing. We try to save money wherever we can and still hire some very qualified people through this whole program. And so thanks, Cheryl, for setting these contracts up and getting these people on board.
You're welcome.
Just to clarify, Cheryl, to make sure, I think this is true, is it fair to say that all of these items are not new items, they're items that we already have been providing services for, and this continues the same line of services that we've been using?
Correct.
Correct. There's no new expenses in improving these, is that?
No.
Correct?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. And thank you, Howard, for your prescient motion. Item number eight, the Support Services Paraprofessional. Tom, would you like to tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, we, you know, when you start the school, every once in a while you have gaps that you have to fill, and this happened to be one of those gaps. We have all male FIED teachers at the high school, and we can't ask them to supervise female locker rooms. So we, we're kind of stuck. We look at all different types of ideas and formats, and the only thing that came up was to hire a paraprofessional to help us with the supervision of those locker rooms. Finance Committee looked at it too, and they had a lot of questions for us. And I don't know if you can comment it on, Howard, or not, but I think this was about the only option that we had when we did the investigation for it.
Yeah, this did generate some interesting discussion, but part of this is, was it due to the fact that we lost some FIED teachers with our cuts?
That had, yeah, that had a little bit, that, well, that had a lot to do with it, actually. And then also, you can't, according to our attorneys, you can't open a, if there is a position open, you can't list it as, as a qualifier, having a female FIED teacher. And they said, nope, can't do that. So we got caught between a rock and a hard place on that.
But we do have a female we can hire.
We do have a female para, yeah. Yeah. And that just, it makes sense to me, I guess.
Because we're hiring a para, we can ask for a female.
That's correct. Well, we don't even have to, that, we actually, no, we couldn't do that either. The majority of our pairs are female, and as we went through the seniority list, and actually, when we opened it up, there was a person that wanted to take the job who happened to be female.
Fortunately.
Yes.
And there's, looks to me like there's quite a few other ways in which we can ask this paraprofessional to serve the school at the same time, other supervision duties and testing help as well?
Yeah, we'll keep the person busy.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So who?
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Big second, Mr. Olson, is that what we're at?
Yeah, you guys tie.
We, we...
Okay. You guys can tie, all right.
Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up is the 2013 Payable, 2014 Preliminary Certification. I'm sure Colleen would like to come up, is willing to come up and inform us about the assignment.
Okay. You have a draft of the preliminary levy certification, certification in front of you. And just to talk a little bit about the process initially, we submit all of our data to the Department of Education, and they crunch it through their levy certification system, which generates about a 33-page report, so it's pretty lengthy. But what the board is required to do is approve the preliminary levy certification by September 30th. And then the information is sent to the county. The county then does all of their processes with it, along with the city and the county levies, the city levies, and the school levies, and then they send a notice of proposed taxes out to all the taxpayers so that the taxpayers have a chance to see what the jurisdiction is asking for. And then in December, you will then adopt a final levy at that time. So that's kind of the timeline for what we're doing here. Now, it's a draft, and that's unfortunate, but with all of the legislative changes that took place last spring, the Department of Education is struggling to get the system reprogrammed. So at this point, I really believe that we're very, very close to what the final will look like for Fairbo. There is just one category that they're still struggling with, that they haven't fully programmed yet, but I don't think that'll be a major change for us. So with that, I think I'll just kind of walk you through the big picture here on this page, if that's okay.
Please.
Okay. So we levy in three categories, the General Fund, Community Service Fund, and the Debt Service Fund. And in the General Fund, I've listed there all the different categories that we levy. What's important to note is that you will see that the referendum is going down, that first line item significantly, but this is a lot due to a lot of legislative changes last year. So that particular line item is going down. But if you look down just a few, you can see there's a new category called Location Equity. That one is, it kind of replaces the referendum line item, and then the General Education Student Achievement. So some of those are replacing what was there, and that's a lot due to law changes. But in the General Fund, you can see that our levy is going up by 67,000, and that is about a 1.93% increase. In, do you have any questions on the General Fund? I'll just ask you as we go here. Okay, in the Community Service Fund, the levy is about 361,000. That's a decrease of 11,000 over last year, not a real big decrease there, but for that particular fund, that's about a 3% decrease. In our Debt Service Fund, this is the fund that we use to pay our mortgage payments, our bond payments, and we've talked about this the last couple of years, but we're getting to a point where we're now seeing, starting to see some reductions, we're getting some of those paid off. And this is the first year that we will see that drop of about 341,000 in bond payments because we didn't pay one off last year. So our Debt Service Fund is actually going down by 7.64%. So when we add all the numbers together, last year we had about a $9 million levy. This year, our levy is down to 8.7 million, that's a drop of 343,000. So at this point, it appears that we will have a 3.77% reduction in the school district levy. Now, again, that could change, I don't think it's going to change a significant amount. So what we normally ask the board to do at the preliminary is to approve the maximum, and what that means is that you approve whatever the Department of Education calculates as our levy amount, and then that is what gets sent, the actual numbers get sent to the county. Any questions on that?
I'm not sure this is a question, it's really nice to note that those bonds are coming off, and on the bonds alone, where the taxpayers look to realize the savings in just this one year, $400,000, and I know that might grow even a bit in the future years as well.
Right.
Particularly for farmers and business owners who are taxed differently, that has a strong impact on, so that's very nice to see.
Absolutely.
Are those bonds still going back to when we built Roosevelt and remodeled the high school?
I should have brought that information with me. We have about four different bond issues. I don't think that this is the Roosevelt one, but I'd have to double-check that. I think this is some, what they call alternative facilities bonding, but I'd have to, I can send that out, information to you.
Sorry.
So what the board would need to do now is just to have a motion to approve the maximum levy as authorized by the Minnesota Department of Education. And then I would, I would probably guess that you'd need a roll call for that, so I would go ahead and do that as well.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the maximum levy. Is that appropriately worded?
Yep, as calculated by the Department of Education.
At this time, is there a motion?
So who?
Is there a second?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to approve the maximum levy? Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Clark, would you please do a roll call?
I have a vote, yes. Tom Casper?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Yvette Martholler?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
Aye.
And Chairman Ingrit?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, the results of the vote is six to zero in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Thank you, Colleen. Next up are some budget items. Item C1 is our enrollment report. You can see from that report that we are down at this point during the year. Our numbers seem to be coming in lower than we had anticipated, so that is something that we'll be keeping a close eye on in the coming months, and see how that affects the revenue projected for this year.
This was also an important point of discussion for our Finance Committee, as you can imagine.
Yeah.
And all those questioned about why we lose some students.
Mr. Chair, is that 3850, is that the critical number? Is that what you...
The 3850, that was projected last spring, and that's the number that we budgeted on. So to...
So we're down quite a bit?
Yes, but to base it on one month's count is a little bit unfair, because obviously the 3850 is an average of the whole school year, so we really need to... September is always not, it's still a number in flux, although usually we don't go up in September, but we have, but I wouldn't expect that we'd go up.
Are we looking for that October 1st count?
Yes, that's usually a better count, although on this report, this is a seat count, so we just, you know, pick the first day of the month, and we count the number of kids that are sitting in seats. The official October 1 count that the department collects is a little bit more detailed, and slightly different than this number, because that would take into account students that are part-time and shared time, and ALC, and all those other kinds of kids.
Is it true that we're four, more than 40 students increased in our 12th grade?
That includes an increase, I wondered about that too, and I, we talked about that a little bit with, at Leadership, and our ALC coordinator has indicated that a lot of those kids are ALC kids that are now attending from surrounding schools. Whereas in the past years, we haven't had so much of that. They come from Owatonna, or Medford, or Wasika, or Waterville. Because we're an area learning center, they can attend that.
And they don't have it?
I'm sorry?
They don't have an area learning center?
Right.
Or the area learning center?
Wasika does, I think Wasika does, but students can choose to attend.
Area learning center means we serve a broader area outside of our district.
Right. In order to have an ALC, you have to agree to do that.
Do they have to do the open enrollment forms for the ALC?
You know, I don't think so.
I don't remember either, so I'd have to check it out.
But Margaret said she's seen a dramatic increase in the number of seniors in the ALC.
And that's good news.
So, and I was going to ask, because I don't see the ALC listed separately here like we usually do. Are we going to change the way we're recording that, in just a moment?
We changed to this way about halfway through the year last year. Just because it was becoming probably a little too complicated, and this number is just as good as what we were doing, so I just rolled it all into the same grade level.
Okay. So the October figure, that's a critical figure?
On this report, no, but on state reporting, yes. There's a difference in how, this one is just simply taking a snapshot of our system on October 1st of kids who are enrolled in our district, and these are just kids that are sitting in our classrooms full-time. The one that's reported to the state includes all of our shared time students, or our part-time students, or tuition students, and a lot of other kids that maybe don't show up necessarily in this enrollment report.
Then October, when you report like a month from now to the board?
Yep.
If this figure is way down below 3850, then we have to plan a course of action?
Yes, you could look at that. It's a little difficult to do anything contractually, which is, you know, 80% of our budget, so at this point, you know, your options will be limited as to what you can do. But yes, we can talk about that.
Yeah, I would suggest that we're probably not going to want to make any devastating changes this year. This is why you have healthy fund balances, which we do, and if it turns out that our projections were too high, and there's been a significant change in the district, then we have a fund balance, and we can begin to think about planning for the following year to make those adjustments that we need to, to address that.
Yep, and I think you, if you remember, probably three or four years ago, we had a very similar situation happen, where over the summer, we lost about 80 kids. The very next year, we bounced back up and even had more than that 80. The very next year, we bounced back up, and even had more than that eighty come back. So at that point, it was an anomaly, and hopefully this is just another anomaly. We'll just have to wait and see. Faribault is a community that unfortunately has a lot of mobility.
Right, and I think another thing I would mention, historically, if you look back at our numbers, to see them jump around by fifty students is not unreasonable. This is a little larger than that, but this happens, and again, this is why we have healthy fund balances, to adjust those when something I predicted comes along.
Any further questions?
Except, except, I just noticed tonight that we had forty, those forty-some students that are in the twelfth grade, actually closer to fifty, and that offsets quite a loss at the elementary level.
Some will, the ALC kids generate aid a little bit differently than a full-time high school student, because they aren't in school generally full-time, but that will help, yes.
But it calls to my attention that we lost quite a number of elementary school students.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
That doesn't show up in the final number, because it was offset by those that came into the ALC.
I'm sorry, yep, yep.
And we don't have exit interviews or surveys, as I understand, is that correct?
No.
We do, we, on the, if they're open enrollments, then they fill out the open enrollment form, and they write an explanation on there. Sometimes I'll visit with parents, sometimes they don't wish to visit with me. And the other things, if they choose to go to a private school or charter school within town, we don't know that until actually October first, so it's, we don't know if they're leaving or going, because we don't have to, they don't have to fill out an open enrollment form to go to a school that's within the boundaries of themselves.
So one of my concerns is, is it because of class sizes?
Could be, you know, I guess you could speculate on many different reasons why parents are leaving, but without, you know, specifically asking each individual parent, it would be difficult to assume anything.
Is that something that's just typically not done in public schools, is to ask parents why they open enroll students in other schools?
It kind of varies, that's really the purpose of that, so that parents can write down. If you visit with the parents, you don't, there's a tendency not to give you an honest explanation for it. Most parents write on that form, and I would say the majority of the explanations are, is that my student was going to this school, we're now living here temporarily, we're gonna keep him there, or my job is moving to this district, we want to start my child there now, so we need to open enroll them. I also get academically, they'll say, this school is better academically. With no explanation for that, what do you mean? For that's just a perception that they have, so you get a variety of different reasons for it. But when you have, I guess this many, if there is this many, there is a concern, what is the reason for that? And we talked about doing a survey or calling some of those parents up and seeing what the reason was. But again, it's pretty tough to dig out honest answers from parents.
Yeah, and again, remember, that's on an open enrollment form, and as Todd indicated, those are children that are going outside of the district. So for kids that are going to any of the in-town schools, and charter schools within Faribault, there is no form filled out. Either the parents call us and let us know they're coming, or we get a record request from that school, then we know that they're leaving.
Do we have an idea what percentage that is that stayed in Faribault at local schools?
We do, I went, and this is not by any means scientific data, I just did a quick look at the record requests that we had in our district as of probably two weeks ago, and we had ninety-eight record requests. And out of the ninety-eight, thirty of them went to private schools within Faribault, so that would be VA, Divine Mercy, Parkside, Faribault Lutheran. Another thirty went to surrounding, and that would include STEM and near-strand. Another thirty went to surrounding communities, that would be Medford, Northfield, Owatonna, Wasika. And then the other thirty-eight or so moved out, moved either moved out of Faribault. In other words, they're going to a district more than sixty miles away from us, or out of state, so. All kinds of reasons add up to a number.
Thank you.
I, I think I understand, and I appreciate Jason's comments earlier, that we have a fund balance which should be able to carry us through this year, and again, we would have to look at next year, should these numbers sustain, and we have no idea whether they would or not. I'm just doing a ballpark estimate here, if these numbers were accurate, if this became the new norm. Are we looking at a state aid reduction somewhere in the neighborhood of four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars?
I would say between that and six-hundred maybe, depending on where these kids are, and how their pupil units calculate, I'd say ballpark about a half a million.
So, budget-wise, we're able to deal with that this year?
Absolutely.
But that could be, if, if these numbers, and I'm hoping they're not, but if these numbers were to become the standard, that we would have to be looking at some way of dealing with that kind of shortfall in a-
Absolutely, and the tricky part comes next spring, because, you know, we have to project who's going to show up in the fall, so it will be up to you to decide if you want to project based on that lower number, or wait another year and see what happens because of what happened three or four years ago. Think about that as we go through the winter.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Colleen. There is no financial report tonight. We do have a gift to consider and approve. This evening, we have one gift from the Bruce Smith Golf Classic in the amount of one-thousand dollars to support strength and conditioning in the Fields Fitness Center. So we thank the Bruce Smith Golf Classic, it's a great event, I think, Todd, did you golf in that this year?
Not very well, but I did golf in it.
If you can call it golf, Todd was there.
That's right.
And we certainly support, are thankful for that organization and the work they do, not only for Faribault Public Schools, but for all the schools within our community. And so with that, I will entertain a motion to accept this gift.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to accept any further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you all. This brings us to other committee reports. Insurance Committee has no report this evening, Wellness Committee has no report. Community Ed says report, but I don't see Anne Marie, is there gonna be a Community Ed?
No.
No report this evening from Community Ed. And that brings us to other matters. Number one, item ten A is the Resolution thirteen eighteen, appointing election judges for the November fifth, twenty-thirteen, School District Special Election. So I'm assuming this is something the board needs to do to move along the logistics for the election. So I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, any discussion on this item? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call on this item?
I'll vote aye, Tom Casper.
Aye.
Deb Davis.
Aye.
Yvette Mathollar.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
Aye.
Chairman Ingrit.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, the vote is six-zero in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next up is item ten B, Memorandum of Agreement Between Faribault Education Association and Independent School District six-five-six. Superintendent Sesker, would you like to tell us a little bit about this item?
Yeah, this is our anti-bowling initiative, and we have some staff that are very active in the middle school that really have worked very hard to develop a program. It was kind of a model program last year, and we're really gonna implement it this year. There are some funds attached to it, which are built into the budget, and we wanted to make sure that the union was okay with this implementation, because there isn't language within the contract that has what we're talking about here. It falls right within our parameters, and it falls right within the Faribault Education Association's parameters. And the good news is that it moves this program, this anti-bowling program called SOAR, right along with both the teachers' satisfaction and the administrative satisfaction. So it's a good program. So we're recommending approval for this MOU at this time.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this memorandum of agreement. Any further discussion?
I just want to thank our middle school administration for getting this memorandum. I had very little to do with this, I think Angie and Mark did a lot of the work for this whole piece, and I just want to thank them, because it is a good program that we are implementing in our middle school, and I think you're gonna see some very good results, so thank you too.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is item ten C, the Riverbend Nature Center, Letter of Agreement for twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. So at our last board meeting, the board approved a motion to request a contract in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars from the Riverbend Nature Center, and to provide information on what that would entail. And so you have a contract in front of you that reflects that, that we are looking for board approval on this evening. Todd, I don't know if you want to add anything?
I think that's a good summary, they fell right within our parameters, they've been very supportive, and I look forward to work, or we look forward to working with Riverbend again.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, Mr. Olson?
Yeah, what did they do in the past before, because I've never seen contracts like this before. I mean, what did they do?
I'm sorry?
What did they do in the past, I mean, this is pretty specific, for grades and sessions? I mean, I thought we just played, you know, paid a flat amount, and, you know, the kids just went there. I mean, am I incorrect, or are they getting really specific on the number of kids, and when they can go, or what they can do? I mean, this is, I guess I've never seen this.
Yeah, you could, it looks a little more specific too, but I'm gonna have Colleen address the contract, because she's the one that went through the whole piece with that.
This contract is exactly what we had last year, with the exception of, I think, two grades are going up for a half hour or less, but they have always specified which grades and how many times they're gonna go, and when they go. That's been, ever since I've been here for five years, I've seen contracts like that.
I would just say thank you for working on a contract, we made what we requested the last meeting.
You're welcome.
So I should note that every group from our kindergarteners through our sixth graders will be going out to Riverbend Nature Center this year?
Yes, yes, and, you know, we really have to thank the Nature Center, because they really stepped up to the plate on this. They're the ones that actually said, you know what, we're gonna try and accommodate the same programs we did last year for the same dollars. So they really did come through on this. Like I said, I think we're losing maybe an hour's time, and so they, if you remember, when we talked about it last month, we were losing quite a bit of time for all the grade levels, but they went back and added back those times. And they have promised to support busing up to five thousand dollars. So we're getting pretty much the same program for five hundred dollars more than we paid last year.
So we're still serving the same group of students that we served last year?
Yes.
Great.
Yep, so they really, I really have to commend the Riverbend Board and the people there for stepping up to the plate, because when we looked at spending the twenty-five thousand with what they had initially proposed, we were probably not gonna be sending kindergarten and first grade out to Riverbend, so.
Wonderful. Yes, thank you, Colleen, that's excellent news, I was critical last week, and, not last week, last month, and was frustrated with this, the contract that we were discussing, and so with the new numbers coming in, very much in line with what they have been in the past, I just want to express my thanks to the Riverbend Nature Center for working so hard to help facilitate that, because I agree with, I think, everyone on the board, that that has been a tremendous experience for our kids and for the community, so that is greatly appreciated, and I'm excited to see this continue. Okay, any further discussion on this item? All right, hearing none, have we done a motion to approve?
Yep.
We did, we have a motion and a second to approve the Riverbend Nature Center Letter of Agreement for twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Other items of information, student representative, we don't have one with us this evening. Mr. Superintendent Sesker, do you know?
Hey, we should put that as a reminder, I'll see if we can-
Discussion item, can you try to get that, so, thanks. Thank you very much. Next item, school board members, any items of information?
I do. I'll start.
Please.
Once again, I'm bringing up the music department and the wonderful job that Chris Dibble does. He managed to get approximately a hundred tickets to Wicked, that was at the Orpheum, which I was fortunate enough to, my son wanted me to go, so I got to go. Unbelievable musical, and anyone ever has a chance to go see it, go see it, it is amazing. They started fundraising already, so I will have fundraising candy bars at the next meeting.
Good to know. I was afraid we would miss out.
But they have new pep band shirts that everyone will see, because I think they glow in the dark. There is numerous opportunities, though, the music department is really trying to fast-forward the program again this year. So Rotary Club's performance is coming up in October, and it don't have the date. It's a Saturday, that everyone should go hear. The Rotary definitely loves the music department, and gives a scholarship, or more than one scholarship for music. So the other thing is, watch for the plays coming up. My son decided to join theater this year, to plug theater now. They have The Brothers Grimm coming up in the fall. Will be interesting to see what comes of that. That's all, do me for now.
Any other items of information from the board?
Mr. Chair, I talked to Mr. Sesker, I don't know if I talked to him personally, but I think I talked to Kathy about our leadership conference in January, they have a show and tell there. And I'm just wondering if we can get our automotive program there to show off what we can do.
I think we sent that to-
Did?
Yeah, I sent it forward onto that, so I'm waiting for a response, so hopefully they'll respond to it, that'd be great.
I think that would be nice, to show off our abilities with automotive in this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Any other items of information?
Do we have some other areas that might qualify for a show and tell?
We probably do, I'll look into that, I thought automotive was a great one, because that's always been kind of on the national spectrum right now, and a lot of schools would be, a lot of school board members would be interested in watching that around there. So that was the only one that we thought about so far, but I'll let you know what Mark sent me back.
I'll just mention, I'm sure I say this on behalf of the board, Jerry Robichaud is not with us this evening, he just suffered a loss in his family, isn't with his family at this time, and so our thoughts and prayers go out to him and his family. So we hope that he has a good healing time with his family at this time. Any other items? Mr. Superintendent?
Just to let everybody know, we're off to a great start for another school year. Staff is doing very well, and our students are great, and our programs are off and running. We're getting, we're almost at full speed right now, we're probably in overdrive for some people, but off to a very good start for the school year. I went to a fair meeting, we're now planning a fall conference similar to the spring conference, if you remember that spring conference, we had a nice panel, actually we had a, it was more of a, not a panel discussion, but different pods where we were able to visit San Olaf students, and the San Olaf professor helped organize that, along with Anne Marie Leland and some of the school staff, to talk about some of the issues surrounding Faribault community and our school district with diversity, and how we can address some of those needs. This is another conference similar to that, where we're actually gonna take it a step further to see if we can find some solutions on how we can bridge the gap of some of the diversity issues and needs within our school district. So again, San Olaf is actively involved in that, I know that Yvette's been actively involved in this, and it's pretty exciting, I think it's good to get some of that communication out, not just the school, but the community, so. And that is, October twenty-fourth is the date that we're gonna be doing that, probably in the morning. We don't have the exact time yet, but I'll send those to you once we get that finalized. But October twenty-fourth would be the date, so you're welcome to come in and observe to see what's happening. Do you want to add to that at all?
That was a great chat, I would second that, that was really helpful.
Uh, was that the Region 1A, 1AA Annual Meeting, where we recognized various state champions and coaches and different things that occurred around our area? I thought it was really moving when the New Prague coaches accepted the, they won the state championship in gymnastics last year, which is tremendous, and about a week into their season, their head coach passed away. And so the assistant coach and the wife of the, the head coach at New Prague were there to accept the award at the 1AA Region Meeting. We're trying to celebrate some of the good things that are happening in extracurricular activities, and for the New Prague group to, group, regroup themselves and go on to win a state championship was, was terrific, so that was nice to see. Personally, I ran a 5K down at Circle Lake. Yvette ran the half marathon, so she did much better than, than I, but we had numerous district staff there. It was fun to see everybody, we had a, had a nice group of people that were-
Bigger group expected next year.
Yeah, so if the Board's interested in doing a 5K or a half.
Do they have a 500 yard?
It was good. Was that a C, C Schools, Rescue and Education, this is one of the organizations that this Board belongs to, and, and I went up there and listened to Commissioner Brenda Cassielis, Cassielis, talk about various things in education. Went to a pep fest today, we're homecoming week, so we're in high gear for homecoming, so take a look around, if you get a chance to visit some of the buildings, see what the festivities are, I would encourage you to do so. And then after the pep fest meeting, I went up to Sage Headquarters and had a meeting with Congressman Tim Walz and Dr. Parker and some chamber members and some other individuals within the community, it was a very good meeting, we talked about industry and moving forward with Dr. Parker's plans, some of the things that we've talked about in our school district in this community, so it was a very good meeting, and that's all I have.
I'll just, just add to something that Todd, what Todd didn't say is that in terms of bringing information to the community about the levy, he's already done how many presentations? 10, are you at 10 already?
I have lost count, so.
We've already started to lose count, so he is out there, I'm joining him when I can, to, to bring information about the levy to the community, so as always, we invite any members of the community who would like to hear a presentation from the Superintendent and myself, to go ahead and contact us, and we'd be happy to, to come and speak with you and try to make sure that we give out as much information as we can. All right, thank you, Todd. Some dates to remember, September 30th, at 3:30, the Curriculum Committee meeting at the District Office. October 7th, at 5:30 PM, work session at the District Office. October 15th, at 4:30 PM, a Policy Committee meeting at the District Office.
Mr. Chair, can I mention in regard to the Policy Committee?
Please do, yes, sorry.
We are gonna review the use of facilities and equipment policy at that meeting, so we just want to be sure that the public is aware that that will be reviewed again. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Yvette. Item D, October 21st, at 7:30 AM, a Finance meeting at the District, District Office. October 28th, at 3:30 PM-
I, I had a question several days ago about that, October 28th curriculum meeting. Is that accurate?
It's, it's because of-
Election Day in November?
Right, and it's, it's to get so many meetings in, in a monthly time, so there, I don't believe there's a meeting in November. The October 28th one is actually from November.
Okay, all right.
It's because of the Thanksgiving holidays and-
That's fine, thank you very much, sorry to interrupt.
Well, that's, this is supposed to be the easy part of this meeting, we're supposed to flow through this, but no, please interrupt. So to reiterate, October 28th, at 3:30 PM, Curriculum Committee meeting at the District Office, and finally, on October 28th, 6:30 PM, a regular board meeting right back here in City Hall Council of Chambers. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.